Good evening. Welcome to our April 19th, 2022 City Council meeting. It is 7:05 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Chaplain Kelly Dupay from Faith Community Church, and Councilmember Tabatabai will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much, Lord, for the privilege of working and living in the great city of West Covina. And God, tonight, we ask your presence to come and be here with the council as they deliberate, as they plan, as they discuss, as they decide. So, Father, give them wisdom, guide them by your Holy Spirit, and bless our city. Bless our firefighters, bless our police officers, those in the community that are struggling right now. God, we pray your blessing upon our city and upon our nation, and, Lord, we thank you for what you're going to do. Bless this meeting tonight, and we thank you for that in Jesus' name. Amen.
We can all face the flag, right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Present.
Councilman Wu?
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Here.
Mayor Costelanos?
Here.
Thank you. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing to report on, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to the presentation section of our agenda. We've got a proclamation for Donate Life Month. Could we have Ms. Nancy Jolly to the front, please? Since 2005, One Legacy has requested the support of Southern California civic leaders and municipalities to celebrate and encourage the gift of life. Donate Life California saves lives by creating opportunities for all Californians to sign up on the official state organ eye and tissue donor registry. In recognition of National Donate Life Month, the month of April 2022, is hereby proclaimed DMV Donate Life Month in the city of West Covina. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. I want to share just some statistics before I share my story, and I will be as brief as possible, I promise. Seventeen people die every day while they're waiting for an organ eye or an organ donation. That's a lot. This last year, even in the pandemic, 2021, 40,000 lifesaving transplants happened, which I think is pretty miraculous. Eighty-five thousand, six hundred cornea transplants helped to restore sight. That's a lot. Fifty-eight thousand tissue donors were healed and their life was enhanced. Organ eye and tissue donation is so important to me, and I want to tell you why. I am always here for information. I'm not here to change anyone's mind. I hope that if you have a fair in your city or you have concerts in the park, that you would contact me. I would love to have a tabling. We do not accept donations. That's not what it's for. We are there to just give out information. You have my contact information, just let me know, and I will make it happen. Twenty-one years ago, my nephew Lloyd became an organ donor for our family. My oldest nephew saved the lives of four people through organ donation. He received a head injury that he could not recover from, and he is definitely my hero. The heart recipient sent the most beautiful letter to my sister stating, "I want to thank you from the bottom of your son's heart for saving my life." We recently found out that the kidney recipient just passed away, so this man who was in his 40s had 21 more years of life due to that donation. Pretty remarkable for a man who wasn't going to live. Twelve years ago, she was thrown to the floor by her sitter who was angry at her husband, and instead of walking away, took it out on a crying 18-month-old. My angel hero saved the lives of three people through organ donation. Caitlin is my big hero. She may have only been 18 months old, but she has given life to three people. One of her kidneys went to a nine-month-old girl that was given only a few days to live, and she's still doing well 12 years later. Caitlin's liver went to a 44-year-old man who could not rise off his bed to play with his children, and he too sent the most beautiful letter to my son stating, "Because of your gift, I can now play outside with my children again." There was not a recipient found in the state of California for Caitlin's heart, and it was flown to the state of Washington, where there was a little girl, eight months old, only had two to three days to live, and this beautiful girl, Sophia, just turned 12. I want to show you this side. We have had contact with Sophia and her family, which has been a true blessing to our family. Less than 1% have the chance to have donor recipient meet, and we feel very blessed and lucky that that has happened in our lives. On more than one occasion, we have been together, and we just feel like we're family. Two and a half years ago, my great-niece Victory was born. Very appropriate name for her. It was just a few months, they found out Victory was in need of a heart transplant. That was before she was three months old. Victory was put on the transplant list, and we don't feel coincidence, we feel miracle. Victory received that heart. She is two and a half years old. And on this side, Victory's eating her cake. Victory gets in trouble, which we love. She's an absolute terrible too, which we love. And there again, we don't believe in coincidence as a family. My nephew Lloyd, Victory is his granddaughter, donor recipient. Our family also advocates for timeout, an adult timeout. If you become angry, please walk away. If you're around someone who is angry, please invite them to walk away. If an adult had walked away, my beautiful Caitlin would still be alive today. We have a family festival coming up. I would like to leave this. I don't know who to leave it with. And it is a run-walk for One Legacy. Come and join Team Caitlin. I've just had knee replacement two months ago, but I'm going to walk. It's in June, so I'm going to walk. And I apologize for standing, having a little bit of a back issue, so I apologize. I have to stand up there. But please contact me if you have any questions, anyone in the community for questions, please contact me. You could be someone's hero someday. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is from the city of West Covina to you. You for sharing and presenting.
And it will go to the West Covina DMV, since it is DMV month.
Would you like to say anything else?
That's it.
Thank you for coming.
I've said enough. Let's wait, please, like on a three, one, two, three. Let me turn my Caitlin up. I'm really sorry. Sorry about that. All right, on a count of three, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you make sure that you're... Yes. Have yourself. I do.
And I'd like to invite former Mayor Lloyd Johnson to the front to present to us about the mosquito issues. Mosquitoes considered the world's deadliest creature, infecting and killing more than 1 million people each year by spreading pathogens to people when they bite. An LA County Department of Public Health concluded San Gabriel Valley communities accounted for 41% of LA County's West Nile virus human cases in 2021. The city of West Covina does proclaim the week of April 17 through 23rd as California Mosquito Awareness Week. Former Mayor Johnson, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to see you, Mayor Costelanos, Mayor Protem Diaz, Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Finally got it right after all these years. Attorney for Mayor Brian Tabatabai. First of all, I'd like to say it's good to see everybody without your bulletproof windows in front of you. You know, before I start about that, I want to remind everybody what Nancy J. Catherine said about One Legacy. You know, every one of you are parents, so we all understand what it's about. When I was on this council, I was involved for five years in a row, or four years, I get back. They put out a wonderful vote, a float. They do it right there in the state of Arendale. I would hope that each of you would take the time when they have it there to go visit them, go see them, and then they have a breakfast there. Well, all the parents that, or those who donated an organ, all the recipients, they're there. They're there to talk about their stories. I think we get to know them a little bit better. So I did that for four years in a row, so that's why it touches my heart. So I would hope that you would all just take a chance and take time to go visit them. Now, I'm here to talk about the San Gabriel Valley vector mosquito. You know what? I want to thank you for this honor tonight, but mosquitoes, like the mayor said, are one of the biggest killers we have. They're not predators. They don't care who you are, how old you are, or, you know, your race. It doesn't matter. And now with the new one that we have, they don't only bite you one time, it's that they'll bite you a dozen different times. It's just the way they are. So there's a lot of things that we can do as residents. Remember, a little teaspoon of water can lay up to thousands of eggs from a mosquito in every one of them hatch. They usually, they won't hatch in running water. If you have, if you water your yard, you have automatic sprinklers. When they're off in the sunny, you should go around your yards and make sure there's no standing water, because this will not only help you, it'll help your neighbors. There's a lot that you can do. You can say, "What can I do for myself?" It's not only yourself, it's your neighbors, because we all see, I do that. I walk in the back of my garage after a rain, and if there's any water that runs, I make sure I dump it out. We all need to do that, is to help it. But I want everybody to remember one thing. I am your representative. If you can't get anything settled, you're more than welcome to have my cell number. I printed out there, I carried it on my business cards the whole time, 626-665-4769. You can call me, and I will make sure. I've done it with the mayor a few times. He's had folks that he's known that had problems. He's called me. I call our director. They took care of it. They went out the next day. They've taken care of it. That's what it's about. It's a city and a San Gabriel Valley vector working together. We can't do it alone, because we're not all over the cities. We have a lot of, I think we have like 35 different cities in our district that we have to take care of, but we can't do it by ourselves. We need the help. We need your help, every one of your help. Like I say, if you have someone in the room saying, "Hey, I'm getting bit by mosquitoes," they can either call our office there in West Covina, or they can call me. I mean, I will come out, I will take a look what the problem is, and I will report it, and we will take care of it. So I think when we had our Director of Communications here a couple of weeks ago, whatever it was, a few weeks ago, he gave a good thing about what goes on. So it's up to each and every one of us. We can't do it by ourselves. You can't do it. It's impossible for this city council to handle the vector mosquitoes. It's up to the residents to take care of their own yard, help their neighbors take care of their yards if they see anything, and report it to us and let us know what's going on. We're not there to judge, you know, with a lot of pools that turn green. We want to know about them. You know what I'm going to do, because those are your biggest mosquito breeders ever. We want to know. We don't go there, we just go there and inform them what they need to do. We're not there to give tickets, we're not there to give citations or anything else. We're just there to help, and that's exactly what we do. And I want to thank the mayor for reappointing me for another four years to it. I love what I'm doing. My wife loves what I'm doing. She loves it, I'm not, she loves it, and I'm not setting up the mind that dies anymore. And a happy wife makes a happy life, and I have a wonderful life now, and I appreciate, I appreciate the city letting me do what I love doing now, and I'm here to always keep you guys there. So if you guys ever have any questions, you all have my phone number, you can call me, and we can sit down and talk, and if there's anything that you need to know, just let me know. Thank you, Mayor.
From the city of West Covina, the proclamation of California Mosquito Awareness Week. Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, on the count of three, one, two, three.
We will now move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have three speaker cards, Mayor. Our first speaker is Albert Ochoa, followed by George Ogden, followed by R. Robinson.
Hello, City Council, City Mayor, City Staff, City Manager. I'm here to submit a petition that I started with our residential street. It still continues. I gave everybody some documentation, so you guys can follow what I'm going to go through right now. I'm not sure how much information. I shared with Traffic Committee, I'm not sure if you guys saw where we're actually having the accidents. I marked the X on all the areas that we're marking. All the actions are actually happening. Just by doing the petition in the neighborhood, a lot of the residents raised their safety concern that it still continues. So it's still an issue ongoing that we need to resolve. I have some ideas just want to submit. Just on the south corner, they have, at the center medium, for those that know that area, there's a picture of a center medium. That's an idea just to help a barrier, so they stop crashing into our residents. There's also a speed hump that I attached and put in your folder, and I'll just read a paragraph or so on it. Safety, speed management, countermeasures. Setting speed limits that are safe, consistent, reasonable, is the first step in speeding management, and it's important in order to protect all road users. Transportation partitioners employ a variety of strategies to manage speeds on roadways, and speed limits are an integral part of this. However, simply lowering the speed limit on a particular stretch of road does not always lower the actual speed at which most people drive on the roadway. Therefore, transportation agencies often install speed management countermeasures in order to get drivers to slow down. What do speed management countermeasures look like? Speed management countermeasures are familiar to drivers that have been used for many years. Others are relative new. All over, all provide great safety and speed management benefits and may offer operations, cost savings benefit as well. Some examples, it's speed humps. A lot of the residents brought that up when I did the petition, they asked for speed humps. Speed humps generally locate on residential streets or other low-speed roads. These rate-stating structures force motors to slow down to a safe speed. Studies show speed humps can be effective at reducing speeds by nearly 10 miles per hour. So we need anything and everything that we can to stop what's been going on for years after years. I put dates next to those pictures that I put on those document folders to show you all the actions we've been having, and I know the city came back, they want to help us and add more signage, and we appreciate everything that they're doing, but I don't think the signage, after talking to the residents, the signage is not going to do it itself. Want to thank Rosario. She responded back to me after that accident, and she was not even in town, and I appreciate the help and quick response as she came out. She actually met with us at our residential, with the residents, and we brought up our safety concerns. So I'm here just to present back again. Speed signs ain't going to do it alone. Traffic enforcement ain't going to do it alone. I want to thank the West Covina Police Department for helping out, doing traffic enforcement, but we can't have them there all the time. They have high-crime areas that they need to take care of, so we need another countermeasurement to stop this. On the south corner, from where we live at, again, they have the center medium, and it works great. It slows down the traffic. It does it by itself. You don't need to have police enforcement right there. That would be a permanent solution if we can have that on the north corner. But again, I'm here to present it, represent the residents that signed the petition that we do need to slow down traffic to bring back safety back. So basically, that's what it is. My petition is, "2022 Restore Safe Driving onto Our Residential Streets in West Covina, California." And I got quite a few residents that are behind. They're all saying the same. Some of them were able to make it a day. My neighbor, Ben Francesca, raise your hand, please. He's the first one that lives on Garvey, coming in, the first residential home, and it starts right there. When I talked to him, he explained to me the same safety concerns. He can't even pull out of his driveway because they're picking up speed. So, you know, that's where it starts off. We got to slow them down from coming from there before they do the corner turn. Once they're coming too fast over the corner turn, it's too late. They lose control, and this is what those pictures that I'm showing you, they, it's too late. Try and avoid a serious accident, injury, or fatality. It just brings me chills just to look at the picture of the last accident we had by my residents, knowing that my grandkids, we take care of them, and the family comes over. We didn't have Easter this year. We used to have it every year, we just, we couldn't do it because...
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mayor, just as an FYI, Mr. Victor Tovar is here in support also and wanted that on the official record.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is George Ogden, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening, the members of the council and staff. I'm going to start off real quick. I'm actually here to support number four, but I wanted to say a special thanks to the fire department that we have here in the city, and also with our city manager who got us started for us. We had an issue with the flagpole for the VFW, and there's certainly not too many people that can climb that thing to put a new rope up there. They brought out the quaint unit and went ahead and restored that for us. It took them a couple of hours to do it. We really appreciate their help. The only problem was they haven't delivered the flags yet, so I've got new flags coming in. Anyway, in regards to number four, I'm totally supportive of that. However, I'm going to, it says, "Consideration of an ordinance adopting." I'm going to change that to, "Considering of adopting an ordinance for taking the vehicles," because if you're going to adopt a vehicle, it's not going to cost us anything. Kind of scares me. You might adopt some of my cars. Quiet over there. You know what I'm talking about. Okay. We have seen a lot going on over the past years, and to be able to protect our citizens has become very difficult for our law enforcement officers. This isn't combat equipment that we're going to be bringing in to go after our citizens. It's to protect the citizens and also to protect our law enforcement officers. How many times can you folks, could probably raise your hands, that we have sent our equipment out to other cities to help secure a situation and to neutralize it? And this type of equipment is important, I think, for, especially for the price tag that's going to be put on it, which is going to be next to nothing. This would save our city money. This would also protect our citizens and protect our police officers, which is, I think, is very important. The, just taking a look at that, if you're in a home and you're not having a good time and you're up to no good, and you look out the window and you see something out there that's not going to be very favorable to you, you're going to neutralize this situation in a very peaceful manner 90% of the time. That other 10%, it's going to happen anyway. We've seen things happening that have been takeover robberies, there's been issues at various different malls. We need the help, and we need the tools to do it. So I would hope that the city council would highly consider this. I'm not talking about bringing in gunships and stuff like this. We need stuff to help to protect our citizens and our police officers. So I want to thank you for allowing me the time to speak on this, and I don't think there's much else that I want to say right now. Good seeing all of you again.
Thank you, Mr. Ogden.
R. Robinson, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening. Homeland Security Secretary Becerra admitted this week, he said, "We know the vax is killing people of color, blacks, Hispanics, Native Americans, at twice the rate of whites." The medical freedom movement is steadily growing. Witnessed the defeat the mandate rally downtown LA nine days ago, hosted by Del Bigtree. The need for a constitutional amendment so medical tyranny, martial law, doesn't repeat itself again or become a permanent fact of life in the future is obvious. The need to avoid medical tyranny is obvious. These two books prove that the COVID is a bioweapon and the government media narrative is a pack of lies. Every gene therapy vaccine is a synthetic virus and/or a cytotoxin venom delivery system. The engineered bioweapon delivery system is a syringe and a lipid nanoparticle envelope contained in the jab. GMO lab-engineered genetically-modified cytotoxins are EUA-authorized gene therapy, experimental gene therapy, not a virus or an organism. Propaganda-driven fear-mongering is a globalist scam. We've seen eugenics operation or genocide. This has been recently proven by two experienced researchers, Dr. Brian Artis and Karen Kingston of La Jolla, California. Their discoveries put them on the front line as candidates for the Nobel Peace or Nobel Prize in Medicine for 2022. The details of how and why we've been tricked and we've been through so much for two years has recently been explained by these two people. It's a globalist cabal. It's a vaccine cult. We need to stop drinking the Kool-Aid provided and produced by the World Economic Forum. This experimental gene therapy fiasco must end. People are coming into hospitals with elevated D-dimers, pneumonia, heart problems, strokes, and a multiplicity of other symptoms. The medical care they're receiving is inadequate, especially if they happen to be unjabbed, because the standard treatment protocol that has been dictated these past two years is deadly. CDC shouldn't be practicing medicine or imposing themselves into the private doctor-patient relationship. Remdesivir, part of the DC-dictated standard COVID treatment protocol, is a deadly toxin. Medical payment incentives under the CARES Act must end. Financial incentives for COVID deaths in a hospital setting must end. Financial incentives... Financial incentives artificially raise the pandemic death toll. These are illegal practices and panics, people. It also violates the Nuremberg Code on medical experimentation because of the lack of pre-jab informed consent. Section 3024 of the CARES Act, signed into law by Obama on December 13, 2016, as H.R. 34 mandates that informed consent can be waived in an emergency. The COVID emergency use authorization, the experimental jab the government considers an emergency, but it's actually fraud and stupid incompetency. Additionally, medical fear-mongering has killed millions, and millions have died unnecessarily. You know, forget about the mosquitoes. December 3024, section 3024 that I'm talking about makes feasible waivers granted or alterations for clinical investigations are contrary to the benefit of humans. If Artis and Kingston, let me finish the sentence. If Artis and Kingston are correct, people could not take, should not take the jab. They have fully explained what we've been experiencing in the past two years. Federal government Medicare incentivizes Jonestown massacre.
That's a long--
Everything I just said should be submitted to the state attorney general's office--
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
--and tested in a federal courtroom.
Our next speaker is Bill Robinson.
That's me.
Excuse me, Bill Elliott.
Another five minutes.
I got another five minutes.
Next time, next time.
Everything--
To be continued.
--I said, if it gets into a courtroom, there's nothing false.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, the city council. My name is Bill Robins, Bill Elliott. I'm an organ donor. I encourage everyone in the sound of my voice to become an organ donor. It's a great program. You don't need it after you're dead, anyway. I had the privilege of accompanying the mayor pro tem to the Ochoa home this last week, and what a nice family. And their neighbors spontaneously all showed up. We had about 10 people there, including us, and, you know, my overwhelming feeling was how much these people love West Covina. They really love the city, and it's really evident. And it's such a breath of fresh air, you know, if you want to torture yourself and get on West Covina social media. You know, some of the people in this very room trashed the city at every turn. We all know their names. All they do is gripe and complain and bellyache and a few other words. But it was really nice meeting the Ochoas, and it was funny. We asked them, well, how did those other signs get here that, the existing ones? Because there's a couple, there's a light, and there's some arrows. And she said, oh, that's me. I did that. He says, like 15 years ago, I came to the city and got that done. And it's not enough, so I hope you guys can really help the Ochoas and their neighbors solve the problem. My wife and I went to Texas, and we were, she was absent last meeting, and we had a great 10-day trip, and it was, it's kind of a special kind of hell to stay in 10 hotel rooms in 10 nights. I don't wish that on anybody, and we would do that trip different if we could do it over. Next time, we will. And so we got back home, and, you know, I just want to tell you a short story. My dad, when I was a kid, I had a neighbor had a German shepherd, and I asked him, Dad, can we get a German shepherd? And he goes, no. I go, but Dad really wanted a German shepherd. My friend has one, it's a really cool dog, he really wanted a German shepherd. He said, no. I said, why not? He says, the gate, the fence, the food, the vet, the liability, we're not getting a German shepherd. Stop asking me. So I realized, well, actually, he told me, I have some good news for you. When you grow up, you get to have a German shepherd. So four and a half years ago, we got a German shepherd from the Baldwin Park Animal Shelter, and we saved him. He was, German shepherds don't last very long on a kill shelter line. So we adopted him, and we had a few issues with him at the beginning. He had separation anxiety from his old family, and he was a great dog, though. We had a little bit of undoing to do, but he was really a loving, loving dog, very loving dog. Well, we got home, and he spent 11 nights in Heavenly Pet Resort here in north of the city. And I picked him up, and he was so happy to see me, and I took him home. He recognized the house. He was kind of going a little bit crazy. I think he thought we gave him away. And less than 24 hours, he was dead. He died of bloat, and I never even heard of it. I was German shepherd owner, never heard of bloat, but it kills large breed dogs like standard poodles and German shepherd are number one and two on the list. So I didn't know what happened to him. My wife said, you know, the dog's crying in the backyard. And I went in the backyard to see him, and he was in distress, and I could tell he was afraid. And I loaded him up in the car, and I'm trying to follow navigation. My wife's on the phone. She, we're trying to get to a pet hospital. Every veterinarian in West Covina that we called, every single one refused to take him. That was heartbreaking, because he could have been saved if the proper procedure had been implemented. I ended up taking him all the way to Glendora to an animal hospital that was closed, which was just devastating. He was flailing around in my car. He was dying. And I know there's a lot of pet lovers in West Covina, and we need a pet hospital, an emergency pet hospital, at least in the area. People have told me about one in Diamond Bar and one in Upland. You know, I went all the way to Grove Avenue in Ontario, Ranch of Cuckamunga, and he died in my arms in the parking lot. And we really need an emergency pet hospital in the area. We have everything else. And I don't know what the city council can do in that regard. I, I don't want to say I lost respect for the veterinary trade, but I was really angry with them that day. Nobody would see my dog. And if you have a large breed dog, educate yourself about bloat, because from first symptom to death, it was two hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no further speaker cards, Mayor.
And city manager, is there anything to respond to from public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council, members of the public. I'll try and briefly respond to some of the comments and suggestions made. The Ochoa family has made quite clear the requests and the needs of that neighborhood. Our traffic engineer has begun to evaluate some of these additional requests. Many of the ones that were made have already been in the works and will fact, that contract will be implemented. They've been issued a notice to proceed starting next Monday. So a number of things are happening there, but not everything that's been suggested just recently. Be some flashing stop signs at Garvey Avenue South and Cherrywood. There'll be additional signage removed and replaced. There'll be some chevrons installed. I just want to assure the council and the Ochoas that the traffic engineer is evaluating every single one of these additional requests, things for like the speed humps, ways to reduce the speed on Garvey. And her process is to do a scientific evaluation based on traffic engineering principles, and then to make her professional recommendations to the traffic committee. In my mind, it's analogous to, in the old days, when you got a home loan, you had to go in front of the loan committee. The loan committee wanted to say yes, but you had to meet the criteria. The criteria in place are her professional judgment and the California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So we'll see some immediate things happen out there right away, starting as soon as next week that contract is in the field and in the ground, and a lot of people will be happy about that. But the additional things are going to work their way through the system to the traffic committee and then back to council. But we'll stay on top of these things. We're taking it quite seriously on the staff side. Mr. Ogden talked about the flag. We were happy to help. There's an item on your consent calendar night pertaining to military equipment. It sounds a little official, a little ominous. This is a policy enacted by state law, AB 481, that requires the city to publicly announce what equipment we have in use. This doesn't add any additional equipment or take away any equipment, but it's a way to memorialize on your agenda so that the public can see what equipment we have and what equipment we're using, and that puts us in compliance with state law. We think that equipment is justified and necessary, and we don't plan to change that. Assuming you approve the policy tonight, that'll be the case going forward. Mr. Robinson talked about COVID vaccines again. I continue to encourage everybody to seek their own personal medical advice in this area. It's a lot of information out there, but I would recommend that people talk to their doctor and get medical advice from someone who has a degree in medicine. And I'd just like to finish by offering my condolences to Mr. Elliott. I know what it means to lose a pet. I've been to that emergency pet hospital in Diamond Bar. They're quite good. But maybe as a city, we can reach out to some of these emergency hospitals and just solicit them and see if they would be interested in a West Covina address, because I know there's a need. I've been through that struggle well, and again, I'm very sorry for your loss, sir. That's all I've got.
A question from Councilman Wu.
And my understanding, on the Sitchas McIntyre Square, they have an animal hospital, right? Have you tried that one? Okay, that one, okay, yeah. I know on the McIntyre Square, they have a so-called animal hospital. Okay, I don't know. That is, they will take care of the dog. Okay, and that's the first thing. And the second thing I want to add on the Mr. Ochoa, okay, regarding, again, I live on this street for 14 years, or this neighborhood for 14 years, and I, we still driving, okay, to, okay, if we go to Glendora Avenue, we will drive on the Garvey, get into the gas station, and go into the back. And so is it, the street from Lock Allen into the East Garvey South and go to the, okay, Cherrywood, it basically has no stop sign, and it's in the back of people's property and on the freeway petition. So I think a lot of people speeding right there when they get into the, okay, and, okay, Lock Allen, okay, so from the street. Again, okay, my kid grew up on the Dark Day School, if you guys still remember. Now it's all the condo. Okay, so from there, so maybe we can have our, okay, traffic engineer to see, can we, in the middle of the street, we can suggest to put a bump, and then when people make a right turn, we say bump ahead. So in that way, maybe can stop people so they don't speed going to end of your home. Your home had been hit many times. I know it when I was living over there. So maybe this is something, a way we can solve this once for all. And then from gas station gain to Cherrywood, their home has been hit many times, too, and that's why they put a blocker. So hopefully, we can do the similar thing to keep that corner, okay, safe, because they have the children riding the bike and playing in the front yard. So hopefully, we can protect, okay, resident to have their family in front of their front yard or something. So this is my suggestion possible. We can, okay, do that for our traffic engineer to look into it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wu. We also have comments from our mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor Castellanos. Yes, when I met with the Ochoas, it was very, it really concerned me that this last accident that they had was like at 6 o'clock in the afternoon. And that's when people are walking around. And it was just, the video that he sent me was so, it impacted me a lot, you know, and I just hope that we can really make that effort to make those medians that are just south of Cherrywood that really do work. I mean, they really slow people down. And so if we can just put them right where they're located on the north side of Cherrywood, I think that would make a major difference. And I just hope that the traffic committee and our traffic person can help out in doing this.
I'm still thinking, besides to put a blocker in that corner, because when they hit a bug, it's way too late. But I think in the, when, okay, okay, from the Lock Allen, you're coming in, make a right turn, and people speeding, okay, they're like crazy. So maybe in the middle of the street, we need to put the, okay, bumper, okay, so bump, okay, so people can just speed in, like, because, again, you can see there's a people's backyard with their fence, okay, block wall, and another side is the freeway. So you can see, and, okay, you can see some graffiti, sometime people tagging over there. So because it's like a exclusive area. So if we can, in the middle, okay, put a road bump, okay, so we can kind of slow down people, and we want them, okay, road bump is in the middle, they will slow down the traffic going to the end, they won't hit a left and right. So this is my suggestion possible, but I don't know how feasible for our traffic engineer, because the sign, I've been, again, I've been over there 14 years, that sign over there for a long time. They have always signed, they have all this yellow to warn people, but people still hit into those homes, okay, over there. So this is my suggestion possible, slow down--
I think the speed humps would be helpful. I think it would be a rude awakening when a speeder that's drunk would probably wake up if he ran into these speed humps. Not a speed bump, but a speed hump, which I think would, I think it would help out.
Thank you, thank you both. Any further comments? No? City manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do have a brief city manager's report this evening. On your agenda tonight is a council public's first look at the city's annual budget. Wanted to keep context in terms of where we are in this process. In March, we commissioned a budget survey. We've gotten some response to that. On April 5, the council received and filed the long-range financial forecast so we could look out for five years. Tonight, you're going to get a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation about it. We're going to have a series of community workshops. I say series, we're going to have two. We're going to have one in this chamber tomorrow night, and then we're going to have a second one at the senior center on May the 4. It'll be the same presentation at both. The public's welcome to come to both. The one that's here will be broadcast. We don't have the capacity to do that easily at the senior center, but I would encourage people to come and hear about the budget, to express their interests and their concerns. We'll have a budget status update again in front of council on May the 17, and then it'll return on June the 7 for consideration of adoption. The fiscal year begins on July the 1. Before we move on to the next topic, I'd just like to take a moment to publicly thank our finance director, Stephanie Sikum. She's, her team have done a really good job, and the budget has a new look to it. I think you'll like it, but we'll get to that later this evening. I wanted to mention the paper shredding event the city had last Saturday was regarded to be a pretty good success. They recycled three tons of paper. We'll keep that on the agenda for future events. We got some good turnout. Wanted to ask the public, invite the public to save the date for a 4th of July Heroes Parade and Independence Day Street Fair. The event will be held on Monday, July the 4. We're going to get the word out via social media, and that push will begin tomorrow. Wanted to highlight some maintenance work that you've been seeing around town. This one is a new sidewalk poured today in front of the senior center. The council had commissioned an assessment of the sidewalks. We're doing that by quadrant of the city. I spoke today to our contractor who is doing that work. He'll have that evaluation report completed by the end of next week, and then we'll know definitively by area of the city, an area at a time, which sidewalks are easily solved with grinding and which ones are going to need this type of permanent replacement. But we know we've got a lot of needs in this area, and it's heartening to me to see our own crews out doing it. They really like this kind of work, and they're good at it. I like the quality of it. This is another example of some sidewalk repair work happening on Glendora Avenue. Wanted to mention that our annual street rehabilitation project will commence next Monday. All of the streets on this map highlighted in blue will be cold-plained down two inches, and they'll get an existing, or an asphalt cap overlay. The other streets, the ones that are in green, will get a Type 2 Slurry. Slurry is the emulsion that goes over streets that helps us get additional life out of the asphalt, that corrects the ravelling and the weathering, and prevents the surface water from getting in. This work will take approximately two months to complete, so we're expecting to be wrapped up by June of this year. Notices to the homeowners were distributed this morning.
City managers, what areas is, is behind the mall or something?
Well, there, some of the streets within that area, I can't name them all, because there's about 100 of them, but California, Broadmoor, Shady Dale, this entire neighborhood. I can get you a street list if you're interested. I'll make sure I get it for you.
So basically, it's west of the mall area, so basically, south.
South in the western part of the city, yes.
Got it. So it's in this neighborhood. Okay, okay, thank you.
As I mentioned to the Ochoas, our citywide vehicle and traffic safety improvement program is also going to commence on Monday, April 25. The council awarded this-- The council awarded this bid at the January 18th meeting. They posted their insurance. We issued a notice to proceed. We've had a pre-construction meeting. There are 30 different intersections that are being treated with new signage, new striping, new pavement markers, new solar LED flashing stop signs and other improvements. You know, this has been of high level of concern by one of my council members. Love that smile. And Monday is our start date. I just wanted to take a moment and talk about some different things that are happening in the area of intergovernmental relations. It seems like this is a pretty busy season, and I'll go quickly so you can get to your agenda. Just FYI, there has been some interest expressed in naming the West Covina Post Office in honor of Congressman Esteban Torres. That would require federal legislation, so that's going to be in the hands of the Congresswoman Napolitano. The meetings with the state California Department of Health are continuing. The next one is scheduled for April 27th. We're continuing to expect that they'll promulgate regulations and the process by which municipalities or new counties would want to stand up, health department would follow. But until they do, we're just continuing to wait for that moment. Work is continuing on the SB 1383 compliance. We have sought, the mayor sent letters to various different elected officials. The response has been crickets, and I don't think that legislative relief is very likely. They have a process of herding the cities into compliance with notices of violation. We are not on the problem child list, not yet, and I plan to stay off of it. I think we'll get into compliance. But they're hoping to avoid issuing notices of violation, which would be a 90-day notice, and then the second notice would be another 90, so you can buy six months being out of compliance. I'm not sure we're going to be in that status. We're trying to stay ahead of that curve. But the city's going to have to make some choices. I think it's going to come down to a council choice between whether we have a one-time residential rate hike of, you know, 19 or 20%, or whether we are able to transition those costs over time, either by doing the services in-house or using the hauler to do them. We've issued an RFP to seek some professional assistance. There are a number of firms that specialize in this area, and we're about to find out whether there's a firm that's interested in assisting with implementation. And I'll continue to report back once we get that into focus a bit more. And finally, I just wanted to mention that there's a lot of federal money available right now. We've submitted a $7 million grant to upgrade Azusa Avenue, including ADA compliance. They needed some more information from us today. They want it by close of business tomorrow. This is always how that works. But we're going to try and get that in by their deadline, and the mayor wrote a nice letter of support for that one as well. That's all I've got this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Moves us to our consent calendar. Council, is there anything you'd like to pull from consent? Mr. City Manager?
Excuse me, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to change my recommendation for consent calendar item number three, which is consideration of award of bid for the Waldemaro Park restroom due to a technical issue that came up during the bid. I'm changing my recommendation this evening that you reject all bids, and I'll put it back out to bid and return that item to you.
Understood. So number three, recommendation is to reject all bids and put it back out to bid?
Yes, sir.
Sounds good. Aside from that recommendation, would the council wish to pull anything? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion to approve all except three with the city manager's recommendation?
I'll make a motion and move.
Second?
We've got a first and a second. Could we have roll call, please?
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Diaz, a second by Councilmember Tabatabai, to approve consent items one through six, changing the recommendation on item number three to reject all bids and rebid. I also, I also have an ordinance title I need to read. Ordinance number 2497, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, adopting a military equipment policy governing the use of military equipment pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Castellanos?
Aye.
Items passed 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on from the consent calendar, we go to departmental regular matters. Item number seven is proposed fiscal year 2022 to 23 budget. Mr. City Manager, will it be our finance director, Stephanie, who will present?
Good evening. So to start, citywide, the city has over 126 million in revenue next fiscal year, and expenditures are expected to be over 128 million. The majority of our revenue comes from property tax, followed by sales tax. On expenditure side, the majority of our expenditures goes towards salaries and benefits. Looking specifically at the general fund, which is the city's major operating fund, the proposed general fund budget has been structurally balanced with a net change in fund balance estimated to be over 500,000. The ending fund balance is expected to be a little over 24.6 million, which is way over the 17% reserve requirement. In looking at fund balance, the chart, the chart in front of you is from the last seven years, and you can see that our fund balance has increased to about 25 million last fiscal year, and we're expected to dip a little bit, but then level out again this fiscal year. So this budget has been conservatively designed to continue to adequately maintain the city's reserves. Looking at general fund revenue, revenue is estimated to be 79.7 million. This is an increase of 12 million or 17.8% from the original fiscal year 2122 budget because we are seeing a comeback from the pandemic. But this is only a 2.6% change from the current year estimate. As you can see in the chart, the top line is the proposed budget for revenue for fiscal year 2223, and the one below that is the estimate. So you can see that we're not increasing that much over the estimate. However, our original budget had assumed that the pandemic would still be ongoing and that we would be struggling from recovery, and so that is the difference between the two. Sales tax is up almost 2.4 million from fiscal year 2122, and is projected to be conservatively increased by 1.5% in the next fiscal year. And that's the big jump that you see in between the original budget and the estimate, which goes up significantly, and then this year it levels out in the next fiscal year. General fund expenditures are expected to be, are proposed to be about 63.9 million, so almost 64 million. This is up 9.8 million or 18.3% from the original budget, but it's only up 5.9% again from the current year estimate. Most of the general fund expenditures go towards salaries and benefits with over 79%. And over the past years, the city, the past year, the city executed memorandum, memorandums of understanding with eight of the nine of its bargaining units, whose obligations have been incorporated into this budget as well. Additionally, expenditures overall were analyzed and projected to reflect the actual expenses incurred based on the current year estimate and prior years. One of the major expenditures in salary and benefits is the city's overtime. Overtime, it continues to be an increasing burden on the city. However, it, the proposed budget is proposed to actually include what is realistic, and based on prior year actuals, we're looking a little over 6.2 million for this year, and based on current year projections and the increase in all of our salaries, we are proposing 6.4 million to bring it to a realistic level. The majority of overtime is from both fire and police. Some changes to this budget. The budget includes funding to bring recreation and community service programs back to pre-pandemic levels. This includes special events such as Spring Festival, 4th of July, egg hunt, and Halloween. We also are proposing to bring back the quarterly newsletter to inform engaged residents. We have also included in the budget an increase in maintenance operations, and specifically to increase the tree trim cycle from seven to five years. In addition, the capital improvement plan, or budget totals over 17 million for the next fiscal year. We have also included a health apartment budget, which is proposed to be self-sustaining and enterprise fund. We do have some proposed changes to staffing. Overall, the net change in staffing is 14 new positions proposed. 12 of those are maintenance positions that would be fully funded by special revenue funds, so no general fund spending. We are also proposing to add one full-time, non-sworn public safety position, and then two part-time positions in HR and planning. We have proposed to remove one position in finance and upgrade one part-time position in IT to full-time. The long-range financial forecast that was on the previous agenda projected deficits for each year in the forecast. The general fund reserves were anticipated to be depleted to 10% or 8 million by fiscal year 2027. That forecast recommended structural changes to increase revenues and/or expenditures, or decrease expenditures in future years. So as a result, this budget that you see before you took several things into account in order to get it to a different level this fiscal year. First off, we removed frozen, non-sworn personnel and police. There were eight positions total that were on the books but were considered frozen. The financial forecast had assumed those positions would be budgeted, so we removed those. We assumed that we would be reinstating the false alarm program and associated revenue. We also adjusted to prior year actuals across the board. Prior budgets had always been looking back at budgeted amounts instead of actuals. This year, we scrubbed everything and went down to actual trends with estimated increases based on the multi-year financial forecast assumptions. Revenue bases were also raised and are projected to increase conservatively in the next fiscal year, but those bases were raised based on current year estimates. As we've seen a jump in sales tax, we don't expect that to go down, but we don't expect it to also increase at the rate at which it did the last fiscal year. However, because we know that sales tax can swing one way or another, it is not recommended to commit this revenue to reoccurring obligations. So we did not include a lot of reoccurring obligations in the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget in consideration of that. Moving on to the capital improvement program, there is over 94.6 million proposed in projects over the course of the five years. 46 million is currently in projects underway or from prior years that we're currently working on, with a total of 65 projects that are currently being worked on, whether they were initiated in the prior years or in the current year. We currently have that many in progress. For next fiscal year, we're proposing 17.7 million across 38 projects total. And this is just a chart that shows where that CIP money comes from. The majority of it comes from grants. The city received over 19 million from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and so that is where you see the big jump in our capital improvement funding. The second biggest funding source would be our general fund. Next is just to go over the schedule that the city manager had recently done. Tomorrow night, we have a community workshop, and then May 4th, and we plan to bring back the feedback we get from those workshops, along with the budget survey at the May 17th budget status meet update, and then receive any feedback from council so that we can make any changes before, hopefully, coming before you for adoption on June 7th. And then lastly, I do want to add that at the entrance and for you, we've added a budget brief that will be on the website too, that we have available for everybody. That's just a one-page flyer of what the budget includes. And with that, I will take any questions.
Councilman Wu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, the budget basically, just like my understanding, just like typical household, you run your home, you have expenditure and you have income, okay? And if you, okay, spend the money less than, okay, and what are you coming in, then you have a deficit, but in the opposite, then you got saving in the bank as a reserve, okay? And then, and so a couple of things, okay, on the expenditures, okay, my request is how we control, okay, the overtime, okay, and how we deal with that, and how we reduce the lawsuit, okay, because that will be all surprise, how much you're going to pay for one, and that will be potentially into, okay, our budget. So that is what I sit over here, been always surprised that we have to pay additional lawsuit by some issues. So just these two things, overtime and lawsuit, I think this is what, okay, the expenditure that we, how can we control? But on the income, okay, I know you based on, okay, on the previous years, but I based on the projection, so I know you maybe didn't calculate, okay, the sum of the projection. Have you add into the Plaza West Covina, I think we done with our redevelopment agency by September, it pay off? And we should have additional sales tax date, would you mind, I can, so I can see?
Yes, this did take in.
That will maybe give us almost $2 million additional income that we've been waiting for a long, long time. In September, I think Plaza West Covina, that is a sales tax generator for us, and will let into our future budget with this income. Because, okay, rather than, okay, try to, okay, and based on, okay, we, what we have, can we create, okay, more development, more of this to create, sell more cars, okay, help the dealer, so we can accumulate more income? So this is the first thing. Plaza West Covina, okay, with that, September, my understanding, we should starting receiving finally, okay, the sales tax roughly close to the $2 million. Second thing, internet sales. Okay, my understanding internet sales is a big one right now due to a lot of people like to order online. I know they base on the population, and we calculate this income, okay, that come to the city. Let me, you can answer. Okay, number three, development. Okay, we have a development, for example, okay, and the Green Lord on the face church, right now, they sold for $54 million, we should have a 14% of property tax, and that will become to us. So have we calculated that income for the future sake? And all the development with, okay, Vincent Home, okay, Pioneer Home, okay, Cameron 84, okay, and some other development, have we calculated some of this already making? So we should have some sales tax, that we should have a 14% of income. So, and the fee we charge with those development, so we should have some income. So that's what I'm saying is, okay, I based on the projection, the income popular, maybe not on your book yet. Okay, so I want to ask, is this the future income? You're not going to put in the book, or this is something you already calculate? Thank you.
Yes, so a lot of those things we're taking into in consideration. I'll start with sales tax, for example. The city already receives a significant portion of the CFD sales tax as it comes back to us, but we did look at that and examine it. The sales tax was also brought to levels which were recommended by HDL, and we were consistent with that, if not just slightly more conservative than them. But for the most part, we definitely saw a huge increase there. In terms of property taxes, we don't have the valuations exactly on our books. We were only able to increase based on what we've seen from the county and estimated up on that. But then, in terms of the building and development, we did increase those as well, or assume that they would be as high.
Regarding this, okay, property tax, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The property tax, for example, on the face church, it's a nonprofit, so we never get a dime of a property tax. Now, they sold for $54 million, and we should receive a 14% of the property tax. So that is a potential income will come to us, is absolutely will come to us because they already sold and they already have to pay the property tax, and we should have a 14%. That should be our income. So 14% of $54 million of property tax, I think that's quite a lot of money will come to the city, possibly a million will come to the city, it's additional income. I'm not going to paint roses, I just want to know how much income we will come and that is, it should come to the city. Thank you.
Yes, so overall, just to state, we did increase revenue significantly to bring the city to, to get us structurally balanced, and those numbers weren't, we're looking back, but also looking at what we're seeing today, and looking at all the different development we're seeing today. And then we're also anticipating all of our recreation programs, for example, coming back to pre-pandemic levels. So revenues overall were increased to those pre-pandemic levels, and then also surpassed that in terms of sales tax.
So Stephanie, so what I just mentioned, all this income not on your book yet, so this basically will be the future book?
Well, there, it is in the proposed budget already, because I basically took the proposed budget to almost 80 million. the proposed budget to almost 80 million in revenue, whereas the last year's original budget was about, if I'm just looking at this, in between 67 million.
So how much increase we have based on what this, okay, much more solid income that we will receive? So we will know this money will come to us. So this is not, okay, something we're looking forward, but this will come to us due to property tax they have to pay, sales tax, fee, it's always sold, they have to pay the, basically, just the property tax, 14% to the city, we should have a guaranteed income come to us. Because before, there's a school property, I don't think we receive any, okay, income at all. But now, it's a development, and just with all those development, property taxes, 14%, that is going to increase so much for our future budget.
Yes. So the, just speaking from numbers, so the proposed budget for next year has increased revenues of 12, over 12 million from last year's original budget. So we have taken into account a lot of the growth that we're seeing into that.
I think it's a very good $2 million, but hopefully you can get more.
Well, we'd always want more, but-
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wu. Any more questions of staff? And Stephanie, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Nope, just community workshops and the flyer.
No, we, according to this, we do have to make a motion, or do, or do we just receive file? We do make a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve staff recommendation?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Got a tie for first? We got a motion by Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado-
And I'll second it.
There we go, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Diaz.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Diaz. Councilmember Tabatiba?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Castellanos?
Aye. Recommendation passes 5-0, and takes us to the end of our agenda. Do I
have any council member reports, requests, or comments? Mayor Pro Tem Diaz?
I have, Mother May I?
All right.
Okay. So I understand that right now we have, I guess, temporary facilities for outside dining in the Glendora area. And I understand that, that it may be ending by the end of the year, possibly. So what I was wondering, if we can have the staff, well, I want the staff, to look into maybe, not extending, but maybe having like standards in place so that we can make this maybe more permanent, outside dining for some of these facilities. So I want to work on that area. And so I'm thinking that maybe the restaurant owners would be happy to extend that and make it, and have some standards so that we can continue with the outside dining.
Thank you for that, Councilman Wu.
And I think this is a good idea. I would support your, Mother May I. I think with the city, due to, with this virus kind of subside currently, okay, and I know other city already request a lot of restaurant to remove their temporarily tent. So, and I think in Glendora, my understanding, last time we went to the lunch with Bonsri, and they say they Friday night, they pack. So how can we help this area? And they willing to make it nicer? So maybe city, like you say, right, you want to look into how the city can find an ordinance to help them, maybe year by year, not just keep them permanent, but year by year to see how can they beautify the neighborhood, have people willing to, okay, eat outside. By the same time, we'll create more, okay, patron, okay, and help the restaurant have more business.
Right.
And make this street nicer. Maybe we're looking to how we put light-
Right.
The light on the tree to make it enticing.
Currently, what I've done is I've, I went ahead and I reviewed the street lights and the sidewalk lights, and I provided some lights that need to be replaced, that are not lit now. So that's, hopefully, we can get that in the works, and so it could be more lit up there. And there's other areas that need to be worked on. So we want to revitalize that area, and we want more people to come in and enjoy the restaurants there and the outside dining in the summertime as well, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, but at the same time, we need to kind of differentiate, okay, two, two area. One is let the city own land, we can try to do the thing. Another one is private owned land, like shopping mall. Okay, a lot of shopping square, they already have somebody outside. And how we help them with the landlord to find a way to, okay, a little bit long-term, but they can beautify what than just 10, okay, look temporarily, hopefully, we can, okay, okay, with the city looking to the ordinance, see how we can help our restaurant, and look into the private area. And Glendora is public area, like city-owned land, to help look into the ordinance.
And I'm not, I'm not saying just limited to Glendora, because I know there's other restaurants, but you know, so all restaurants that have that in place now. You know, if we can extend it or have some standards put in place for all our restaurants in the area. So.
Thank you for that. Sounds like a good recommendation. Anything else? Any other reports, comments?
I had a comment.
Okay.
Thank you for the Easter event. I know we attended Cortez first and then Del Norte next, but I know that this is the first time they actually opened up another egg hunt for the special needs children, which, you know, I missed at Cortez because I was at Del Norte, but that was catering to those that are in need and, you know, those that have issues with being around so many people or disabilities or anything like that. So that was nice to see. A lot of cities don't have that, so it was nice to see that West Covina did that and catered to another population that was able to enjoy the event. So thank you for putting out this great, fabulous event for the egg hunt. And it was a lot of children, a lot of people, and they greatly appreciated. They had fun, and hope everybody else had a wonderful Easter weekend, but thank you.
I know I promised staff I don't talk too much, but I cannot help it. Okay, and just follow up about, okay, and Councilwoman, we got an egg hunt. And again, I've been done, had done this for six years, moving to seven years, okay, and beside the pandemic, two years that off, I never see so many children. I never see so many crowd at Cortez Park. I've done 2016, 17, 18, 19, but this is a huge crowd, okay, huge, okay. And I want to thank the staff, okay, and the resident coming out big time, okay, to enjoying the outdoor, okay, and staff to put all the egg hunt into different area, including the special need children. And again, I want to thank staff, okay, to do such a wonderful job, and so considerate, okay. And, and I think I only see this, okay, happy, smiling children. I think this is what we're here for, and to help our community and to help our children to have a much better, with this pandemic, I think a lot of them very depressed. But with this, I will want to bring the normalcy back to our city. Yeah, what pandemic. Thank you so much, staff. Thank you.
Councilman Tabatiba?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to piggyback on what was said. Staff and Kewanis did a wonderful job. And, you know, thank you to Councilwoman Lopez Viado for mentioning how inclusive the events were. And, you know, I just want to highlight, you know, Friendship Park is going to be a completely inclusive play area, and we're working on getting some, some more inclusive play areas at our other parks. And I think that's something, you mentioned the Azusa project that we're putting in a grant for, right, trying to make those sidewalks ADA accessible, and just really acknowledging, right, that we want to be able to make sure every resident can enjoy the city. So I think the city's on the right path. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. No other questions or comments. All right, that concludes our meeting. We are adjourned.